To, once again, appreciate your patience here on getting started this evening. We welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting for October 16th. And our start time is delayed a little bit. It's 7:09. I want to acknowledge the fact that we do have a full quorum here tonight. We have council member blocks them online and that we'll go ahead and get our meeting underway. And typically, what we've done in the past, we always take turns here on each month on conducting our opening exercise, which is prayer and a pledge. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Smith Edmondson for your choice of order.
Thank you. I'm going to pray first and then I'll ask you to stand and we'll recite the pledge together. Father God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you that we have an opportunity to come together and do the business of the city on behalf of the great citizens of Leighton. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for just ability to be in a country where we can come together and we can talk about things that are top of mind and things that help the residents in our city to live full lives where they are happy and they're able to connect with one another. I ask that you help us on tonight with all of the things that we have on the agenda and let everything that we do be done according to your will. And send these things, I ask, and say in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
All right, if you will stand and recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flagarm and from the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much for lovely prayer and leading us in the pledge. Council, we have two sets of minutes that we need to take action on. Hopefully, if you had a chance to read through them, if you have any additional changes, please make it known. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to accept as written.
Mayor, if I may, there was one correction I wasn't able to get to prior to. On the council meeting minutes for September 18th, 2025, under the Leighton-Utah 250 Community Committee, there was a spelling of committee member Lamont Hampton. I think it reads as Hamilton, but his last name is Hampton, H-A-M-P-T-O-N. With that, I move that we adopt the minutes of Leighton City Council Work Meeting, May 15th, 2025, and the Leighton City Council Meeting, September 18th, 2025, with the stated corrections.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved in second that we accept the minutes with the correction as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to our municipal announcements at this time, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Roberts for Parks and Rec's announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the opportunity to work with the Parks and Rec Commission, Parks and Rec Department, and they have a lot going on. First of all, thanks to a generous Ramp Grant, Surf and Swim has a new wave machine that is up and running and very exciting, eight different types of waves that it produces now. So biggest waves ever at Surf and Swim. There's some adapted hours to accommodate for fall break, which we're in the middle of right now today, finished, and tomorrow open for open wave between 12:00 PM and 8:45 PM. So send the kids up there or take them and take the family tomorrow and enjoy the new feel of the waves. Activities wise, coming up tomorrow evening is our Halloween Bash here at the Amphitheater Plaza and in the amphitheater. There'll be a lot of different games, live music, and fun for the family, so bring the family out, 6 to 8:30 PM, no cost. So just have the kids dress up in their Halloween costume. There'll be a costume contest as well. October 18th, the next night, there will be Whispers in the Dark, so just a great event of storytelling, starting at 3:00 PM and going until 6:30 PM. There'll be some amateur storytellers at 4:00, and then after that, the professional storytellers will take over in the amphitheater. Should be a lot of fun. Again, 3:00 to 9:00 PM, sorry, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and that's as well free. And then looking forward into November, November 8th, Veterans Day, we'll have our Veterans Day Parade and Veterans Honor Ceremony. Always look forward to that every year. There'll be more information about the route and that coming up, but the parade time will start at 11:00 AM, ending in Constitution Circle here, and then at 12:00 PM, or sorry, 12:30 PM, we will have our Veterans Honors Ceremony. And again, that's not just Leighton City, but also with Northern Utah Vietnam Veterans Association helps us put that on, so thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, that's good, good reading there. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, just on the waves. I happened to walk over there when they were testing them, and there's one, I didn't see them all, but the one that they showed, the waves were breaking. It wasn't just a movement of water, they were, so it should be pretty cool, yeah.
Yep, that'll be a lot of fun. Okay, do you have any other announcements? Okay, all right, well, I appreciate that. That's, we look forward to everybody coming out tomorrow night in costume. There will be a costume contest as well, so. Okay, now we'll go on to an important part of our meeting, which is our verbal petition and presentation. And as Councilmember Smith Edmondson corrected earlier on our Committee for America 250, there's also a very important celebration with the PTA. So I'm kind of excited about this, this council. We are going to go ahead and read off a proclamation, and then when I'm finished, then I'll actually have the recipients come up and we'll hand you our proclamation. So with that, I'll go ahead and proceed. It says, "Whereas, in 1925, Utah officially joined the National Congress of Parents and Teachers, making the formal beginning of the statewide parent-teacher collaboration in Utah. Whereas, for 100 years, the Utah Parent Teachers Association, or Utah's PTA, has worked to support and advocate for and strengthen the partnership of parents, educators, and students in Utah's public schools. Whereas, the Utah PTA has provided leadership programs and resources that promote student success, family engagement, equitable education, and community involvement throughout the state. Whereas, Leighton City recognizes the importance of strong public schools and the value, the role of family engagement, SIGVIC involvement, and community partnership in supporting student achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Joy Petro, Mayor of Leighton City, along with the Leighton City Council, do hereby proclaim, October 2025 as Utah's PTA Centennial Celebration Month, and encourage all residents, educators, families, and community organizations to participate in local PTA-sponsored activities and events, support ongoing PTA membership and volunteer efforts, celebrate the legacy of 100 years of service and advocacy for Utah PTA, and promote the value of education, family involvement, and student well-being in our community. I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Leighton to affix this 16th day of October 2025." So with that, we all want to say congratulations, and I'd like to invite Stacy Mullenette, as well as Deanna Espinoza, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up to the stand. I'll present your proclamation, and then you're welcome to take a few words.
Thank you so much. This is, 100 years is a long time, and we're so grateful for recognizing the time that the PTA has spent in the state. It's a pretty great organization that I've been involved with, and I grew up in a PTA school, my kids have gone through PTA schools, and it's just, they do so much for parents and teachers and the kids. And really, the focus is on the kids. Our mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children, and we really are trying to work for all children. So thank you, we really appreciate it.
Before you turn it over, go ahead and state what your title is within the PTA, because it's...
Okay, so right now I am the Davis Junior Council President over all the junior highs in Davis School District, and this is Deanna.
Yeah, and I'm the, over the Freeport Elementary Schools.
Awesome.
In the district.
So, and then I've been a state PTA president. Three years ago, I was the state PTA president. But we both live in Leighton, so.
Well, we really appreciate your involvement and setting the example here. I mean, I personally have been involved with PTA in the past, but I know all of us here definitely support education and really want to acknowledge the fact that we're great this organization, has been around for 100 years, and know and hope that it will continue to be there for another 100 years.
Totally.
Okay, well, would you mind coming up and allow us to shake your hand then?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Counsel, did you want to add anything more to that, or have any comments? You're welcome. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and I know you're pretty involved. They do all, yeah, they do all the things. I'm a member of my local PTA also, but we're just grateful for other folks in the work meeting. I was talking about how studies show that young people need at least three non-parental adults who care about them and who they know care about them, and that helps prevent them from, you know, suicide, drug and alcohol use and all of those things. And the local PTAs are a huge part of that. All of the kids that I see at the schools, they know who the PTA parents are, they know the activities and the functions that you all put on, and so it's a really great partnership to have in our communities and in our schools, especially for the kids. So thanks for all that you guys do.
Okay, with that, let's go ahead and go to, excuse me, our citizens' comment portion of our meeting, and please, if you can, come up to the mic, state your name and just what city. We don't need your address, but certainly feel welcome to go ahead and address this governing body and understand that no dialogue. However, we'll get back to you, and if there's more of you that speak on the same topic, hopefully just know that we prefer you to stay to three minutes, but go ahead and take your time.
Dave, are you worried about that breaking of the tidal wave for an undertow or something? I'm Dee Rice, retired Davis School District employee, and I live on Oak Lane in Leighton. And I'd like to address the council about the dangerous situation we have on our street. We are ever so grateful that they've repaid that road, and it's wonderful, but it's become a raceway, and we've had many situations. Myself, as witnessed, just on Friday, a neighbor called me, actually, her husband called me. She was too upset. A deer had been hit, a baby deer had been hit right in front of her house. She dragged it onto her driveway, and later it did get up, but it crossed the street, fell into the ravine. It wandered off somewhere, don't know what happened, but that's the second deer that's been hit in like a couple of months that I know of, and I'm just one neighbor. What makes this last incident really dangerous and scary is that where my neighbor's house is located, there's a cul-de-sac, of which Megan lives, with her children, and the cul-de-sacs that, and there are many, that empty into Oak Lane, they're on a hillside. And so the kids are playing, they're on their bikes, they come down the hill, they try to stop, some do anyway, and if they don't make it, now that was a baby deer. What if it was a child? And all of these cul-de-sacs now have children in them, and all of them do the same thing. They're on a hillside, they come down into the lane, and there's nothing there, the people are just racing by. We have no street signs that say, we know that it's supposed to be speed limit 25. Nobody does 25, it's some...
Us?
Or less. We did ask when they originally put the road in, what they could do to stop the traffic, the speeding down the street, and we were told that they would put a trailer that would determine, you know, the speed and flash when you're going too fast. Instead of it coming onto Oak Lane, they put it on Kay's Creek Drive, and I think they've had one there twice, but never on Oak Lane. And it's just become this big speedway, and I'm the old person that's yelling, "Slow down!" all the time. But Megan can tell you her personal situation with her daughter and what recently happened. And we have another neighbor that couldn't be here tonight. He said his kids were hit twice, and so was his dog. Said he'd addressed the city, I don't know if it was with the council, but he said nothing happened with it. So we're here to see what you guys can do, hopefully minimum speed limit signs. I know you can't do speed bumps, but we were promised a trailer that would have the speed and flash and, you know, let people be aware. They did have a police presence for a little while, they did do that, but, you know, they can't be there all the time, and I'm just fearful one of those children is going to be hit, and that's just going to be a bad situation. So I'll let Megan speak.
Hi, my name is Megan Kroll, and I live just off of Oak Lane, and just last week, I was taking my children to school, to the bus stop, and my daughter, who is fearless, I'll admit, darted out into the road, and a car was coming way too fast, had to slam on its brakes. I did not even have any chance to react. I could just hold my breath and say a prayer that it was going to be okay, and luckily it was. But then the very next day, on that same road, that baby deer was hit, highlighting just an ongoing issue that we're having. Now, the problem with Oak Lane is it's not a straight road, it curves. And so when people are flying down the road, which they often are, and we've resorted to being crazy neighbors and yelling and, you know, like, "Slow down!", you can't see what's coming. You can't see, and we do have a lot of deer in the neighborhood, we have a lot of critters, it's, you know, heavily wooded, but at this point, we are seeing a lot more families move into the area with young children, and so it's just become an incredibly precarious situation, and we would love to see what the city could do to help us out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do have that mobile trailer that we can move around, and so we'll make note of that.
Love that. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? The appointed one.
I'm Jennifer Shepherd. Did you want my address? I forget.
No, just what city.
Leighton.
Okay.
Way to go on the wave pool pump. Paid for by Ramp Taxes, but something I'll never use. Nor will I use the $700,000 bathroom upgrade happening to Andy Adams Park, nor will I attend the concerts because they're too loud. I don't have kids that live in the city to participate in the other arts things that go on, but what I would participate in and feel like I represent a large proportion of the city is the need for a dog park that could be paid for with Ramp Taxes. It's on the ballot, and I'm conflicted as to whether I want to vote for it or not, because I really don't feel like with my situation, they really benefit me. And they could, you know, they could, a lot of people with getting a dog park, you know. It needs to be on the agenda, at least. Parks and Rec has proposed two potential sites, one of which I disagree with, is even viable, the Bamberger Trail area. But the David Weekly, yeah, that has potential, let's talk about it. There's other areas, too, that could make great locations, the Mutton Hollow Retention Basin, the Holmes Creek Irrigation Area. There are places, there's money, there's additional grant money. I appreciate, Bettina, what you said in your prayer about wanting Leighton residents to be happy and have places to gather and form friendships. For me, that would be a dog park, and for many other residents. I will forewarn you, there's been some media interest in this issue as of late. I'd like to be able to say that Leighton is supportive and cares and is forward-thinking enough to provide a safe place for the many, many dogs that are in this high-density city. Can we please get it on the agenda? Can we talk about this seriously? Can we make a plan for the future and get this done once and for all before the land gets gobbled up? You know, I want to vote for people who are going to represent the needs, and I've been in front of you many times now, and the commission, many, many times, and it goes nowhere. It's very discouraging. I know you've talked to other city elected officials, bountifuls, you know, listen to them. They're trying to get you to follow suit, get your own, let us have our own dog park. It's not, it's not okay that Parks and Recreation is just saying, "Ah, go use theirs, go use theirs." That's irresponsible. Let's have our own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to also say that I agree with her. I've been a resident of Leighton City for 26 years now, and I've had many dogs and no real place to take them where you allow dogs, even on leashes. I noticed Leighton Park, it's beautiful. I'd like it to keep beautiful, and I get that, you know, a lot of people don't do what I do, which is pick up after my dog, but if there was a dog park where dogs could run around and everything, maybe it would help the other parks not to be so messy, because they have to clean up at the dog park. And it's been a long time, you know, to not see a dog park in this city. It's grown so much in the last 26 years. I'd like to see that, too, and have it considered for a vote for Ramp. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to also say that I would absolutely love a dog park here. We have dogs, and it's very hard to find a place for them to go, and I have many friends around here in Leighton. I'm from Leighton City, and that we definitely would love a dog park here in Leighton.
Good. Okay.
I know I've said many things before. I'm Megan. I'm obviously here for the dog park.
Megan?
Yeah.
Do you mind saying your full name, so...
Oh, Megan Smock.
Sorry.
So, yeah, we have mentioned many benefits of a dog park, and we've even mentioned it in the Parks and Rec meeting, and when they did their presentation, they hardly mentioned any of them. So just offhand, benefits for dogs is exercise and physical health, socialization, mental stimulation, training opportunities, stress relief, just better, well-behaved, healthier, happier dogs. Dog owners get a convenient exercise outlet, community and social interaction, behavioral improvement, a safe environment, educational opportunities. And like Jennifer mentioned, like, there's things that the Ramp Taxes have done that aren't going to benefit everybody in the city, but I can tell you that a dog park will benefit everybody in the city, everybody. It encourages responsible pet ownership, reduces neighborhood nuisances, so it will reduce the problems that people, non-dog owners complain about with the dog owners. It'll reduce those problems. It does improve the enjoyment of the city and the park spaces, and it really does make for a more enjoyable place. So really, there are benefits to everyone, every person, every dog, every house, like, it really would benefit more than some other things that I have seen on the list for the Ramp Tax. So I was wondering, who determines the priorities of the Ramp Tax? Because if there was a vote, I'm pretty sure that a dog park would take precedence over those other things. So please consider it, consider the benefits, consider how it would improve the entire city and everybody in it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Tanya Andrade-Bury, and I'm here to support also the dog park. I think whether you're a dog lover or not, I think it benefits everybody. So I think she made all the points of, it also reduces the off-leash illegal behavior. It gives us a place to actually take our dogs, and I think they can become better citizens, canine citizens. So that's all I got to say. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I know, I'll just speak my own mind here, and I'm, counsel, if you want to chime in, you're welcome to. Typically, we don't comment here because, you know, we don't want to get into any type of argument whatsoever, but tonight we have a very light agenda. So I know that this has an issue. I know we've tried several different areas. We did try the Mutton Hollow area, we got a big pushback on that. I know that there's some other property that we looked at, unfortunately, that went by the wayside, and I can tell you, I personally have reached out now to four different private owners of property to see if they were willing to put in a dog park. So I can tell you, it's not going unlistened to, but yes, as a governing body, we can have this discussion with us and then be able to kind of, you know, make the, kind of decide how we want to go about this, but I'm not the only one trying to work this. I know we want, you know, we do want to try to solve this problem, but unfortunately, it's the ground and the location of the ground, because we have done our due diligence with a lot of other cities, and unfortunately, the closer you have it in a neighborhood area, which you would think would be the most beneficial use because it's walkable for folks, that's also where you get the most contention, and it ends up being more of a nuisance than what I know the rest of the people would like it to be, including myself. So I'm personally working on it, and I will continue to work it, and hopefully, if I can get somebody to step up with their property, then I guarantee you, we'll go for it. It may be, I'm just out of curiosity, this is my own information, typically, we don't do this, so I mean, I'm going outside of the rules here, but if it happened to be a private dog park where you would have to pay for ownership, just by the raise of the hand, would you be willing to do that, on those of you that spoke?
Pay to go into the dog...
Pay to go, yeah. Okay, all right, well, thank you, I appreciate that input. Does anyone else, I know Bettina, you said you might want to comment?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So to echo what the mayor's stating, it may seem like nobody up here cares. That's not true. We care, we're listening, and I've brought it up a number of times since I've been on the council. In 2021, we've had a few presentations, we had a recent presentation, and I know to some of you in the public, you see the presentation or you hear it, and you think, oh, well, they're misrepresenting, or it's not what it should be, but what they're giving, what... oh, well, they're misrepresenting, or it's not what it should be, but what they're giving, what staff has provided, has been very useful, at least it has been to me, I'll speak for myself, it's been very useful to me to know of the areas that they have reviewed, and the options that there are, and so, just with anything, I was going to plug the ramp tax earlier, many of you have already spoken on it, so maybe I don't have to do too much, but when it comes to parks, there are monies that we use to build those, including the ramp funds, but also impact fees and things of that nature, and so there are processes in how long it takes for things to be actually built, and when we do put things in place, we want them to be done right. We don't want to just put a pad wherever and just say, "Go have at it," because that has to be, it has to be monitored, it has to be cleaned, it has to be safe for not only residents, but also for dogs and for everybody else who's there, and so we have been looking at it, reviewing, talking, and, you know, I keep going back to Parks and Rec, just to get more details, because I want to understand more about what all goes into it, and one thing I will mention that has been a little bit difficult, I would say, probably for me personally, maybe others, when we do talk to other cities, we don't hear as favorable recommendations as are being presented here with what they have to do to maintain, and so there are a couple of options that have been presented to us that I think are really awesome, and those are options that I'm interested in looking forward to and pursuing, and those are things that I've been doing as well, like Mayor says, she's been doing other things to try and make sure that we can come up with something for the residents. Unfortunately, nothing happens as quickly as we always want it to happen, but I don't want anyone to feel like we're not listening and we're not moving, but things do take time to be done correctly, and I agree, you know, with all of that, you all have said they will benefit the residents, they'll benefit all of us, those who have animals, those who don't, those are not the questions, there's no hang-up in our mind about those types of things, it's about doing things the right way, and making sure that when it is done, it's a benefit to everybody, and that it's done well. So those are just my sentiments, and I do think the ramp tax has been beneficial to the whole city, even if you don't utilize some of the things that have been used, at the very least, it reduces the amount of taxes that we are using for us to do some of these projects, so whether you're using those things or not, it's still helping with the tax dollars that you're providing to the city to do other services for us, so thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Jennifer and Megan, you've been to the Parks and Rec commissions for well over a year, and as Council Smith Edmondson said, it's not unnoticed, it's not not talked about. We understand the desire, at the same time, as Councilmember Bettina also said, government doesn't work really fast, and it's tough to make capital improvements especially. We finished a park last year, it was in the works for many years, and desired by residents a long time before that. So one other, I guess to answer one question, as far as ramp decisions that are made, we do have a ramp commission that's made up of residents across the city, and they, it's incredible the amount of time that they spend on ramp applications, and where that money goes, so I don't want to, I want to give all that credit to that commission, to the Parks and Rec Commission, and to Councilmember Morris that sits on that commission as well. Great work is being done, and also, one other factor, and I know Jennifer and Megan, you're familiar with this, but the Parks, the Parks and Recreation has a master plan as well, and that master plan is a document that is formed by the citizens of the city, and the priorities in that document, we have to follow, to some extent. If we took a dog park that was on the lower end of the last time it was renewed, and we jumped that up to the top, then there's a lot of residents that are losing services that ranked higher, so we have to take that into consideration as well. As we've told you, that's in the process of being renewed, so, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into that, and we're trying to provide the best services to our residents, but it doesn't happen that fast, it's major capital expenses like that, so thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Okay, council, we have no other business on our agenda tonight. Do any of you have anything else you'd like to speak on? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that a second, Dave?
That's a third.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for attending this short meeting tonight, we appreciate your input as well.